Good evening. Welcome to a very wet Monday evening here in Bella Vista. Alderman Wilson, nice to have you back.
Thank you.
Glad you're able to join us this evening. We'll ask for Reverend Ritchie to give the invocation please, followed by the pledge Let us pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks for the elected officials of Bella Vista that are gathered here this evening. We pray that you would give them a spirit of wisdom, of kindness, of justice as they seek to serve the people of this community. We pray for the emergency responders of our community and other city employees as they do their work, praying that you would watch over them, use them, just as you would use all of us to your glory. Again, bless us, in Christ's name we pray. Amen. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Mr. Jertson, roll call please.
All right. Alderman Morgan.
Here.
Alderman Flynn.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman King.
Here.
Alderman Wozniak.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
All present, six zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to citizen input. First is Ms. Lloyd. Good to have you back.
Hi, Linda Lloyd, 102 Fairway Drive, and I'm here to thank the city for their past support of the Bella Vista Museum. I volunteer docent at the museum, and it's amazing the people that come in to learn about the history of our city, and only by understanding our past can we help to chart our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lucas?
Thank you. I am Zita Lucas. I'm the vice president of the Bella Vista Historical Society, and I'm here on behalf of the board. Carol Harder is our president, and she had a little accident at home, so couldn't be here tonight, much to her regret. But we do thank you for the past support you've given us, and we'd really appreciate it if you can continue to do that. We also are seeking other revenue, and we did get a grant this past week from the Benton County Historic Preservation Commission to help us put a new roof on the old 1927 water tank that stands up on Cunningham Drive, so we're thrilled about that, and thank you all very much.
Thank you. I was up there yesterday. That roof is certainly in need of repair, isn't it? Okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets. First is the council meeting that was held on October 26th. Are there any additions, errors, or omissions? Seeing none, we'll do it by show of hands. All in favor, raise your hand.
Motion first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we gotta do a motion.
So moved.
Take it.
All righty. Show of hands, all those in favor. Against. Carrie, thank you. Next is the special meeting that we had on November the 9th to go over the medical plan for our employees. Again, a motion to approve if there are no errors or omissions.
So moved.
Take it.
And again, we'll use a show of hands. All in favor. Against. Carrie, thank you. The mayor's report is going to be slim. I do not have the monthly financials. They were published today, but I spent the day in the boardroom, deep immersed in budgets. So we'll, with your indulgence, just move on. Okay. I would entertain a motion, and this motion is going to be different this evening, to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only, and to add a new resolution to the agenda regarding a vehicle purchase in 2015 for the Community Development Services Organization. May I have a motion to approve both of these, please?
So moved.
This is a motion to suspend the rules, to read all ordinances by title only, and to add an item to the agenda, which requires a suspension of the rules. So you're suspending the rules for all of those reasons at one time.
Moved by Alderman Flynn, second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The first new business is an ordinance accepting and confirming easements dedicated to the public and for other purposes. This is a lot split, creating two parcels of land. One is 3.5 acres, the other is 37.13. It provides for a right-of-way dedication, so it conforms to the master plan, and the planning commission has recommended approval. Mr. Sunnison, any other words? Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Recommend approval as presented.
Take it.
Is this first reading?
Yes, first reading.
Yes, this is first reading. Got you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the next ordinance. Amending the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to provide for regulation of the burning of certain structures to prevent or eliminate fire hazards, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. Now, we talked about this at the work session, and we instructed Mr. Kelly to change some of the wording and add some wording, so hopefully you've had a chance to read it, and I would entertain a motion to amend, to accept the revised wording that was requested at the work session and is now included. Counselor, do you want to take us through it at all?
I will. Grab a copy here. What we did, this is largely what you saw at the work session. What we included and added was a couple of things. One, provided for the presence of the fire department whenever there's going to be a structure burning, and that was a concern that was raised at the work session. So that has been included in the proposed section 10-35. We've also included a brand-new section at the very end, which is proposed section 10-38. This provides a general burning regulation for anything that's not a structure that you can legally burn. And what this says, and it'd probably just be easiest just to read it, except when using outdoor fireplaces, fire pits, outdoor cooking grills, smokers, or similar devices designed for the controlled use of fire, no person shall openly burn any item or material allowed to be burned and not otherwise regulated in sections 1032 through 1037 without first contacting the Bella Vista Police Fire Dispatch at its non-emergency telephone number or in person at least 30 minutes prior to conducting the burn. It also provides that no open burning regulated by this particular section shall be conducted after sunset, nor shall any open burning be conducted without the physical presence of a person on-site to monitor the burning for as long as open flames are visible. A water source sufficient to control the fire shall also be readily available during the burn. So this basically says no night fires, and also would require a person to be there so long as there are open flames. If it's smoldering, it's no longer flaming and burning, and conversation with the fire department, they're comfortable with that point, not having to have eyes on it at that point. It also requires water to be present. And in that final subsection of the new section, you cannot burn in any manner which would cause unreasonable encroachment of smoke or heat on neighboring properties. One of the concerns or questions that comes up at the fire department is people will call, and they'll complain about excessive smoke coming their way or something like that. Of course, fires create smoke, so this would just restrict any unreasonable encroachment. In other words, if they were to get it too close to the side of a property where the smoke would be affecting someone or getting their property too hotter or something like that, it would regulate that. So that's been added to what you saw last time, as well as the provision regarding presence of fire department, its structural fires. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have. Those are the main changes that you're going to see.
I do.
I guess I would feel more comfortable if there was a stronger statement that a structure could not be burned without the presence of...
Well, it says, it's been...
Well, it's vague.
Well, I didn't intend for it to be. Section 1035, after issuance of the permit, the applicant may set fire to the structure approved for burning, beginning no earlier than 10 days after and no later than 10 days after the date of permit issuance. Prior to setting fire to the structure approved for burning, applicant shall contact Bella Vista Fire Department, notify them of the plan for burning the structure, and obtain its approval and presence at the site.
I guess I would prefer a stronger statement that no structure would be burned without the fire department being on hand, present. I guess it says the same thing. I would have been a little more bold about saying it. Is there a way to do that and still pass it tonight?
I will. You all are the legislators. I'll make it say whatever you want it to say.
Am I the only one that feels this...
I think Alderman Anderson had a couple of comments, too.
Okay.
Not about that particular one.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think it says it, but obviously, anything can always be said stronger. If you want to try that, why make the recommendation?
Well, what he was reading, also the next sentence says, "The Bella Vista Fire Department shall give approval and be present." So it actually says it twice, that they'll be present.
All right.
It also says it up in the title of the section.
All ready?
All right.
Alderman?
The question I had, you made some comment about need for revision. I don't believe we need a revision. This is the first time it's been presented as an ordinance to a formal meeting.
When we issued the agenda with the packet, was the old version, and so in order to get the new version before you, we need to amend to...
Okay.
So it's on first reading, amended on first reading, and it'll be this from now on until you change it again.
I had one thing about the smoke. Talks about, where'd it go? Reasonable or unreasonable encroachment? Like the smoke or the heat in the flame I can see. The smoke you can't control. If I'm burning leaves somewhere, the wind shifts, it starts blowing it across the street into my neighbor's front door or window or whatever, and they call, are they going to say, okay, you gotta put the fire out? Because that's going to be what, I can see that happening when somebody's trying to burn.
There's obviously a judgment call built into that sentence. It says, you know, "Shall not burn it and conduct it in such a manner as to cause unreasonable encroachment of smoke." It doesn't mean no encroachment of smoke. I would assume that our firefighters would go out there, and if the smoke is just blowing straight into someone's window, or, of course, if it were that windy, probably wouldn't have gotten the permission to do the burn anyway. But there is some judgment call, I guess you could say, built into that for reasonableness based on the circumstances.
I was just trying to look at the possibility of getting a lot of calls.
I can remember, Chief, you and I went out on a call once where there was some smoke, and we were able to mitigate it by telling them they had to actually take stuff to the stump dump and not continue to burn because there was too much smoke.
Can we occasionally get those type of calls where people call about the fact that it's affecting their health or windows, that's still breathing, something like that? I would have to tell people that.
Okay. Any more discussion? So I'd like, or I would entertain a motion to approve the amended verbiage of this, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay.
Okay, vote on, Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
At the work session, we had talked about putting together a plan to advertise and let people know that this now exists, and I've spoken to Cassie Lapp, our communications manager, and she's going to put together a plan for us to ensure that, to the best of our abilities, we can inform all our residents of what's happening. Still on this ordinance, as you know, there are a couple of buildings that one owner has offered to let the fire department burn as a training exercise, and that's been around for a while while we worked through asbestos issues and then worked through this ordinance. So I'd like to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading, if someone will motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Vote, please, sir.
Okay. Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. So I'll read for the third and final time, "Amending the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to provide for regulation of the burning of certain structures to prevent or eliminate fire hazards, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes." May I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you.
All right. Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
And as you remember, the state has changed the period of wait time from 30 days to 60 days. I would also entertain a motion to approve an emergency clause.
So moved.
Take it.
Any discussion? I think that...
I think the rain's putting the fire out. All right.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor to submit an application for grant funding to the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism. This is an expansion of the hard-surface trails that will be connected to the Razorback Greenway Trails in the vicinity of Cooper Elementary School. There's a map depicting it in your packet. Mr. Sunnison, do you want to add any words?
Thank you, Mayor. This grant application is for construction...
Give me the microphone, please. This grant is for construction funding of this project, and this has been developed internally. There would be no cost to the city. I just want to make sure to get into the microphone.
We're getting the echo, and we hit that close.
Got you.
I understand your frustration.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Are there any questions? I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract with the Bella Vista Historical Museum for the provision of museum services to citizens of the city. This, as you'll read, is a $10,000 contract, similar to last year. It also includes something a little different this year, which is a $2,500 incentive, so that if the museum is able to raise $2,500 towards the contract, then we, too, will include an additional $2,500 as an incentive. I believe that the Historical Society Board of Directors has also approved this approach. And finally, we have set up an auto-renewal so that we're not coming back year after year, and hopefully our friends at the Historical Society will be able to budget without fear intrepidation in heart. Are there any questions?
The setup year-to-year includes the $12,500 process?
Yes, it does. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into amendment number two to the contract for the animal services with the Bella Vista Animal Shelter, to provide extension of the contract through calendar year 2016. The only note is there is no change to the current agreement that we signed in 2015. Are there any comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is approving a law enforcement mutual aid agreement between the city of Bella Vista Police Department and the city of Gravett Police Department. Chief, as I understand it, Gravett is the last local city in our neck of the woods that has yet to sign this type of agreement with us. Is that correct?
Yes, in our last holdover, too.
And do you feel that they are also in agreement to sign with us?
Yes, I do.
Great. Any discussion?
Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you.
Take it.
Thank you.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is appointing members to the city of Bella Vista Public Library Advisory Board. As we discussed last Monday, Mary Ann Farner and Evelyn Adler's terms are up at the end of this year. When it was first set up, there are staggering terms, and theirs is the first two terms to come to fruition, which is at the end of this year. They have agreed to sign on for another five years this time, not two, and unless there's any discussion about this, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Take it.
Thank you.
All right. Alderman Wilson. Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a trail license agreement and trail maintenance agreement with the Bella Vista Property Owners Association, Inc., for purposes of facilitating a public recreational trail system throughout the city. It is really with great pleasure that I bring this to the council this evening. It is something that we have been working on long and hard for many months, and we've been working with the Walton Family Foundation, as well as the POA, Cooper, Trailblazers. It's been a very interesting discussion, but everybody has really pitched in. All parties want this to happen. Counselor, can you take us through some of the thoughts that you might have?
Well, we addressed this a little bit at the work session. Hand it out tonight, there is an exhibit that Chris or his staff have put together. This is going to be incorporated as part of the actual contract itself. These are the various subdivisions of Bella Vista Village POA that are affected where this trail is actually going to be going through. This is a terminable license agreement, and so this means a couple of things. One is that the POA will retain ownership of the property. Two, they have granted a license in favor of the city of Bella Vista and the usage of the general public, which means that no membership cards, no fees, no anything will be required other than just being a person to make use of the trail system that's affected by this agreement. It's a 25-year agreement. It can terminate if there's not usage, so there is a sunset on it. If for some reason this were to fall out of usage after a period of time, I don't anticipate that at all. I think it's going to be very popular for what it's worth. This is part of the master trail plan that the city adopted a while back, and it's going to be incorporated into that. The Walton Family Foundation has been partnering with the Northwest Arkansas Trailblazers, is that their name? Bella Vista Bentonville Trailblazers. They are the actual group that will be building the trail, and we're talking about soft-surface trail. So this is not going to be like your asphalt Razorback Greenway between Bentonville and Fayetteville-type trail. It's going to be nature trails more along the lines of Tannard Creek, Blowing Springs, hiking trails, and biking trails at this point. This is what we're talking about. So the agreement does that. It's the city's obligation, this, is to commit $20,000 per year, matching the POA's commitment of $20,000 per year, for a total of $40,000 for maintenance after it's been constructed. And the POA will be procuring that maintenance or doing that maintenance. If they do that maintenance, there is a schedule of charges that was included in the agreement as another exhibit on the front end, so we know exactly what those charges will be and know what the split, obviously what our split of those costs would be should maintenance will obviously have to be done at some point. Also, there's some word in there about FEMA. I cannot commit to you that FEMA funds would be available should there be some disaster damage the nature trails on POA-owned property, but we have agreed that if it is available, that money would go toward repairing the trail system at 100% without any match from the POA toward that. So I don't know that if that money would be available or not, but if it is, we're committing to use that for repair of the trail. So this public access is important because I'm sure, as you all have heard me say at one point or another, and I'll certainly say it for benefit of the public, we cannot spend taxpayers', general taxpayers' dollars for the improvement of private property, and POA property is private property. And so we've got to have some right of the public to access it, and that is what we've been able to obtain through this agreement. And so this is a good thing. This has been a lot of legaling around. But I will say this, everyone has been quite cooperative and had a spirit of cooperation and wanting to get it done. And the foundation, Walton Family Foundation, has been very much supportive of this, and it's because of them that this can happen. So be happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question. Just on cursory examination, I see that at least two of these subdivisions are listed on here twice with the same parcel number. Is there a reason for that?
There may be a different proportion of the same property that are affected in that, but we'll remain in duplication as prior to execution of the degree of the downtown city. And we'll give the top graph...
Well, I don't know what that is.
Association?
Oh.
How many miles of trail are in this agreement?
I've got an S, I believe they said 38?
Yes.
Well, this particular provision is an overall system of 38 miles. There's approximately 36, so on the overall...
Right. The other approximate two miles is on Cooper Reserve property, and there will be a separate arrangement that we're working on with Cooper, who in principle is on board with this. We just haven't gotten that part of it finalized yet. They will be granting to the city and the general public also a right. They're going to do theirs in a little bit different way for their own reasons, which a little bit different way, uh, for their own reasons, which makes sense. And, uh, you'll see that separately probably next month.
Other questions?
Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, setting the meeting schedule for the Bella Vista City Council for calendar year 2016. Normally, that's done in January of the year as part of the organizational meeting, but we thought we'd get a leg up on it this year because we were also planning the meetings for the Planning Commission earlier this, this month. Um, there is a schedule in your packet. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review it. Any discussion? If not, then I would, yes, sir?
I'm just looking at, it could be just me. We only got like six days in January, nineteenth to the twenty-fifth. That's probably just a tight one. And the same thing, next December, you get the nineteenth to the twenty-seventh. That's more than...
I think they're dodging holidays.
The one comment would be where there is a holiday on a Monday, the meeting, the work session is moved to Tuesday evening. So that's the reason for that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll go ahead. If we have to fix it later on weekend.
Okay. A motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second, sir?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. The next resolution, establishing residential and commercial rates for solid waste trash collection in the city. If you remember, we talked about this at the work session last Monday. The original, um, proposal from Republic was four point five percent increase. I was asked to go back and attempt to lower the rate. I have been successful in doing so to three point nine. Um, so as a result, similar to an earlier, um, I think it was actually an ordinance, for this, uh, resolution, we need a motion to amend to accept the new rates as negotiated after the last session.
So moved.
Second.
And we'll vote on the amendment?
Okay. Voting on the amendment. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
And finally, establishing residential and commercial rates for solid waste trash collection in the city. This is now to vote on the actual resolution itself. Is there any discussion?
Let me, I can just address something. Uh, this is last year's resolution with three point nine percent added to the curbside collection limit for residential customers, thirteen ninety-seven, and then all of the commercial, uh, the table below, those numbers have all been increased by three point nine percent, as well as the additional charges have been increased. The two dollar per bag, uh, extra bag fee, which they never charge anyway, but that still remained at two dollars.
Thank you.
So everything else is a three point nine percent increase.
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
The final resolution is one that we agreed upon at the very beginning by amending the agenda, and this is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract with Landers Chrysler for purposes of purchasing one new Ram 1500 crew cab vehicle and for other purposes. Mr. Sunnison, I believe this is to replace a rather aging Jeep that we have at the moment. And the reason for doing it this year is to be able to get the 2015 pricing through the state. Is that correct? And the money is in your budget? Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve, please.
I move that we, uh, move forward with this purchase.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right. Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion. First is budget for 2016. I'm pleased to tell you that after spending another day in the boardroom, following the trail of my predecessor, the budget in its draft form has been finally completed. So I will be sending it out tomorrow to the Alderman, along with three pages of highlights, um, for your review and comments. The marketing plan, um, there's been no change since last Monday. Still in progress. Um, I have a call with the marketers tomorrow. Meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be Monday, December fourteenth, five-thirty in the city hall conference room. The next regular meeting of the city council will be Monday, the twenty-first of December at six-thirty, right here. Planning Commission work session will be Wednesday, December the second, at four o'clock in the city hall conference room. And the Planning Commission regular meeting will be December the fourteenth, at six-thirty in the city hall conference room. And finally, the Public Safety Committee meeting will be December the ninth, at nine o'clock in the morning, in the city hall conference room. Any other business? And we are adjourned. Yes, sir?
I just had one comment. Uh, I think all of us probably received some comment concerning, from an, uh, a group of citizens that are particularly happy that a storage shed was placed in the front yard of a house in a particular subdivision. Uh, I've been connected with the city for twenty-five years, and my twenty-nine here, and for whatever reason, I don't believe that was ever discussed before or considered, although both the POA, ACC combination, and the city have taken action to keep other things out of the front yard, like playground equipment, swimming pools, that kind of stuff. Uh, I'm not up to speed enough to say that I want to do away with storage sheds right today, but I do believe we should at least look at it. Uh, I would respectfully request that the city administration folks take a look at it, see if there's any kind of an indication that something like that does deflate property values in a particular area. And if so, then I would think we might wanna consider making sure that those kinds of structures, in addition to several of the other things that we've already prohibited, are not allowed in front yards. This particular storage unit, for those who haven't driven by it, is pretty good sized, out in front of the house by probably twenty-five to thirty feet, uh, probably only, I don't know, ten to twelve, maybe fifteen feet off of the road. Uh, as you come up a particular way, it almost blocks the entire house, uh, until you get up close enough that you could kinda see around it. Uh, it's a definite, as of the last time I looked at it, a definite, different color than any other structure in the neighborhood, and stands out, in my opinion, like a sore thumb. So again, I'm suggesting that we take a look at it in some way. Uh, my idea would be for the administration to take a look at it first and see if it makes any sense to be doing anything about it, and then hopefully we could be discussing it some more in the December and maybe even January meetings. I do recognize that it's probably too late to do anything about that particular structure, but I would hate to, for instance, in my neighborhood, see every house in my neighborhood have a structure similar to that out in their front yard.
Okay. Actually, um, I was up there yesterday having another look at it. Um, it did conform to all the ordinances. It conformed to the ACC. They did pull all the permits, including an electrical permit. Um, but you're right, it's in the front, but it's not right in front of the house. It's actually to the left a bit of the driveway, but it is, yeah. So thank you for that. We will have a look at it. Thank you, Alderman.
Do we have any indication if there are people living in that structure?
We have no indication that there's anyone living in the structure, no. Any other business? Thank you. We are adjourned.